Line, Ben, I'm telling you what, Denny's, it was flat-lined. It was definitely not there.
Give a CPR.
We should leave that thing plugged in for a whole week. I call the order this Grand Haven City Council special work session. And Linda, would you call the roll, please?
Vanessa?
Here.
Brueker is absent. Scott?
Here.
Fritz?
Here.
Michaela?
Here. We have one item on our work session agenda this evening, and that is community center investment. So we're going to ask Pat McGinnis, our city manager, to walk us through what we're looking at, the possibility for the community center.
Thank you, Your Honor. The city council on December the 3rd visited with the community center board at the community center to look at the condition of the building, to walk around and kind of get a feel for the project that is going to be underway shortly to replace the air handlers there. That's a significant investment, long-term deferred maintenance item that is going to serve us well for many years. Looking, the community center board is always looking to the future and thinking about what tomorrow might bring. And so they've also been working for some time. This discussion's sort of been evolving and refining for a number of years, really. They've been talking about different approaches to investing in the building. And they've identified a number of items they would like to address after this project as a next phase, if you will, of investment in the building. And they presented some ideas about working on the steps on the, I guess, the west side of the building over by the fountain and the enclosed area, the planter area, and some of the issues with the fascia around the building. Also possibly adding a deck to the outside of the building on the south side facing Central Park and opening up that Mackinac Ballroom to an outdoor, kind of a terrace or veranda overlooking Central Park. And also the possibility of enclosing the entryway on that side of the building to make that sort of a, an oversized vestibule, vestibule, hard to say, vestibule, as you go into the building to kind of protect that area from the elements and maybe add some energy efficiencies to the building. City council looked at the different things and said, well, you'd like to see some options, some different approaches, maybe different ways of splitting that project up. So we looked at those things that were initially proposed, the original proposal to do all of those items, and then a lesser version that would not include all of the items, that would include just doing the improvements to the exterior of the building, the steps, and the veranda or deck. And then finally, just doing only the maintenance items alone. The rationale, you know, first off, doing the things that are needed to maintain the exterior of the building and keep the building in usable shape and preserve the building are being done just because of that, because they're maintenance items and absolutely need to be done. The other items are intended to add some attractiveness, try to increase rentals. Shar Sayse, who's here tonight, has reported some lessening interest in renting the building, some fewer rentals at this time, this time this year compared to this time last year. I talked to Shar today about it, and we discussed, you know, how many more rentals she thinks maybe the improved attributes might attract. And she thinks anywhere six or eight weddings per year perhaps would fill in if they had the outside patio experience as part of the rental. So that would be $6,000 to $8,000 a year in additional revenue. So the difference in cost there between 223 and 181, you know, about $40,000. So you could do that math, and five, six, seven years, it would likely potentially pay for itself. Of course, there's no way of knowing. You won't be able to know if somebody, unless we interviewed them and said, did you rent this because we had the option to have an outdoor opportunity during your event, whether it's a wedding or a retirement party. But it does sound like that would be a very nice, attractive value-added if we did have an outdoor option. I just gave you some pros and cons, some of the benefits, as we could have added additional income. We just give a new appeal, a new splash to the front of the building. And the appointed board does support this request. On the con side is that it is additional cost, and the extra items are not necessary. They're more of a want or a desire than they are an absolute need for the building. So with that, you know, staff is recommending that you go along with the community center board recommendation. We feel that the investment will last for decades of citizens to use the building and make a greater use of it and enjoy that outdoor connection to Central Park and just the outdoors. What's there now is somewhat tired. It's been there for 50 years now? Yeah, 50 years now, plus, so maybe it is time to give it a facelift and a slightly different intentional change from what is there now. But I did give you the other two options. That, this rendering shows, you know, there was some concern about the types of tables that were placed out there. So we asked the architect to change those tables to, I don't know if you can get a different view there, Ashley, to, you know, round iron tables with brown or black umbrellas. You know, before, they had some square tables there that a couple elected officials suggested they didn't look quite right out there. They looked sort of like picnic tables, but these would be round wrought iron tables with some nice deck furniture out there. You could see the door leading into the Mackinac Room that would open up that room somewhat.
So that's the presentation. You've got a couple of your volunteers from the board here tonight, James and Burton, and also Shar, and then Derek's here if you have any questions on the public works front.
Okay, well, meeting at the community center that a few weeks ago, I think that was very helpful in seeing the things that were being proposed and the reasons why. There is a need to do some work out there. And so it's not really a question of, you know, do things need to be done, but how much needs to be done and about the wants, rather than, you know, there aren't all needs, but there are wants. And it is about the marketability of the building. I don't know if we know why things are dropping off, if they're dropping off somewhat, if there's reasons for that, you know, I don't know. If you have any ideas, I'd be happy to hear them. Or, and if these are the kind of things that would change that trend, I don't know if that's just the way things are going. But I can say, bottom line, I can see the need to reinvest in this building to give it, you know, to give it a refreshed look and a refreshed face and maybe a bit of a, you know, change in accessibility. So, and I was one of the ones that didn't like those institutional-looking tables. So the round tables with the little umbrellas make it a lot more inviting than a set of rectangular picnic-looking tables that make it look like, behind a wrought iron fence. So this is way more appealing than that was. So, but if you, you know, have any comments on my questions, that would be appreciated.
Shar Sayse, Community Affairs Manager for the City of Greenhaven. I can honestly say that I think the wedding venue idea ebbs and flows with trends. And currently, the trends are barn weddings. The feature that the community center offers that no other facility offers in the tri-cities is that we are able to provide a rental space, and the renter can enhance their event by choosing their own caterer and their own beverage service company. So I think from a marketing perspective, that's our niche market. And we just have to be able to capitalize on that because there isn't another venue in the area that offers that. We do have a couple of other things that are happening in the community that are going to impact even further, I think, the desirability of our location compared to other locations, because there are two other locations that are offering waterfront access, and that's a big draw as well.
Sure.
So without having, you know, any improvements for 50 years from the building's perspective, you know, the younger 20, 30-somethings are not, the building is not as appealing to them, and they're usually the ones who are spending the money on those, the wedding venue events, so.
That'll make sense. And I think, you know, fixing up the steps, fixing up that courtyard area, I think that would be a real enhancement. Besides the fact that it's necessary, I think it would really add a lot of appeal to the, just that space in between the library and the community center, so.
It's a little hidden right now with the retaining wall the way that it is. And I think once it, you know, if it gets opened up, I think that that park will actually be used more because it's not used very often.
I did a little survey, my own. I called up a few places and asked them about, I'm not so sure that the income or whatever it is. Weddings are down all over. I mean, they're all telling me that far as weddings go, their interest in places ago has dropped off. There's not as large as it used to be. In the last few years, they've seen the numbers that they have dropped off far as rentals go. So say that even just with the appeal that we're going to gain some more, I'm not going to buy that because of what I've seen and what I've talked to with people. But the face needs, I look out there and there's places out there that are really, really bad-looking. I mean, you can see where it's, the foundation around the wall and that has just fallen out. You know, it's just things that maintenance that needs to be done, things that be taken care of. The steps on the side need to be taken care of. The air handler, I understand that needs to be done. I'm not so sure if we're going to invest all this extra money. If we're thinking, if you're thinking we're going to gain anything, I really don't think we're going to gain that much more for people to come in there. That's just my own personal opinion. The people I called and talked to, they're, just want to know what their rentals were like for our weddings and that. And if you're talking about weddings, people aren't spending that kind of money anymore to do that. They're, it's, the younger people now are, it's, the whole thing is changing and evolving. You're absolutely correct. It is, it's evolving around, and...
And I also believe that we are doing a lot more expo events.
Yes.
Which is a little bit less revenue, but it's something that encompasses that entire ballroom. And we may be able to increase fees if there's a little bit more enhancement available to that type of event.
That's exactly what they were telling me also. They've been handling a few more meetings and that for organizations and stuff like that to fill their void that they can't get when it comes to weddings because it's just dropped off. It's, the only thing they tell me is that the younger generation doesn't want, they'd rather take that money and do something totally different than...
Yep, it's definitely changed.
Yes. But I'm all for the air handlers and stuff in that order. I'm still kind of oozing on the outside part. I don't want it to look institutionalized. I don't want to date it and stuff like that. This is just a conceptual drawing. I just...
Dan's not here, and I don't want to put Derek on the spot. But as Dan expressed to me, is that retaining wall needs to come down regardless.
Yes, yep.
So whether the repair is, you take it down and you put another one up just like it, but it all has to come down, and the trees have to come out, and we need something new there. So either way, the repair is, the wall comes down, and something either goes back up or we have the flat space, so.
That's exactly what I was saying. The wall is definitely in dire need of repair. It's seen, it's, the trees are definitely way overdone, and they should have been gone a long time ago. They reached their limit and outgrew. The concept, eh, it's all right, but I just want to make sure it fits in that neighborhood, in Central Park view and stuff on that order. I have to agree, Jerry says, yeah, the square tables didn't fit it. Now round, I don't know. Maybe if I take some of them, tables we have that are round, let's put them up there when they get the trees out of there. I can kind of picture it a little bit better, but I'm still up in here.
Well, I know the picnic tables that are out at the stadium, they're always in use.
Absolutely.
So it's a good possibility that those, if there's an opportunity to sit outside, you can go get your sandwich or whatever someplace else and sit outside in here and eat it if that, if it was, if all things were in proximity, working together well, so.
I guess I'd have to say that I'm not too concerned about what furniture you buy. You're going to buy several generations of furniture over the life of the building, and I don't think that should be much, a very big part of our decision. I guess that, as Mike said and as you said, you know, weddings are becoming more difficult sell. They're not as, they're not what they once were for a revenue generator, however. That's where something like this might be desirable to do because you're going to have to go after other markets. You're going to have to market yourself in different ways to different experiences. Younger generations are still looking for experiences. They're looking for things to do and things, not necessarily for things to take home, but for something like this, for a venue that's more interesting and a little more dynamic. And so I can see where this would be valuable in that respect. So I guess I have warmed up to the idea of this veranda, especially having seen the things that need to be done. The things that are broken need to be fixed, need to be fixed. Anytime, whether you're a private entity or a municipality, if you invest in a facility and you own a facility and you operate a facility, you're going to invest the money to take care of it. You're going to fix the things that are worn out. You're going to replace the things that are worn out. You're going to fix the things that are broke. You can't maintain your way to a new facility. You have to invest in it. And I think that's where this initial $181,000, I think it was, was basically fixing the things that were broke. And that has to happen. And that's when, there again, we've invested in this facility. We're going to maintain it. Whether it makes money or not, we're going to do that. The additional investment, because we're going to tear up the outside and have an opportunity to kind of leverage that work to create this open space, I can see value in that. I guess what I'm not clear about, because maybe it's too many months have gone by, or weeks have gone by, or days, or however long my memory actually is, can you explain what the other $50,000 was for from the original quote to the $223,000, which is the fixes plus the veranda? What was the other $50,000? Was that for the entrance?
No, I have tonight's presentation. Can you answer that for me, Pat?
Yeah, the three different levels there. The first is the improvements without the veranda or the...
No, there was $181, there was $223, and there's a $273.
Yeah, the $273.
The $273 was the original thing you showed us.
Right.
Way back when. And now we've got these other two proposals, which seem to be more suitably scaled for what we're interested in doing with the place. What was the other 50 grand for?
It is, the middle one is without the enclosed entryway there.
Okay, so that was the entryway.
Yeah, you take that away and that's...
The other 50 grand boxed in the entryway, turned it into an enclosed space.
Correct. Turned it into an oversized vestibule.
All right. And that's what I was trying to find out for sure. I wanted to make it clear to everyone that if we forego that, we still might be able to turn this into a more interesting place, a more marketable place, and maybe something that's not so strictly tied to weddings.
Right, right. And that little vestibule area wasn't necessarily, it's not absolutely necessary, but one of the things that it will do is it will protect that area that's underneath there because what we're seeing is the handrails are deteriorating, so they're, the steel is rotting out. And then the brick face that is actually facing the interior of the building is falling off because it wasn't properly installed and didn't have the right drainage on it. So it would save, it would protect the front of the building a little bit more with the glass enclosure there.
Okay, but we got 50 years out of the way it was designed originally. So maybe by repairing what's there and doing it properly, we can forego some of the extra cost and justify doing something like this. And if we buy round tables, square tables, and octagon tables, we can mix and match and have an interesting place. So I guess I'm kind of leaning towards this middle, middle proposal.
If there is, the amount of money that we can still collect on this for the life of the bond, is, if we do the most expensive fix, is it, plus the air handlers, and I don't know if the carpet was, if carpet was in there somewhere along the line, and the sound system, is there going to be any money left over, or is that, is there going to be anything left to bank for future repairs?
The air handlers are part of this fiscal year's budget.
Right, right.
And I wouldn't advise replacing the carpet at this point in time if we're going to do any kind of exterior entrance because that would be a waste of money. So yes, we did some calculations, and if we put away some money, I would say at a minimum we could have, for the life of the monies that are coming in, we could probably put $500,000 to $700,000 away, keeping in mind that for the next two years that we have those monies, that we won't be doing any major repairs. And at this point in time, the biggest thing that we have to complete are the air handlers.
Okay, so you're saying that there'll be that, have $500,000 after this stuff is done? After, okay. And that's the highest-priced item, or depending on whatever we want to do, it's either the $273 or the $223, whatever we end up with?
We had estimated, according to Jim's calculations, about $380,000 annually.
Okay.
Coming in, so.
I just didn't want to spend all the money that we had.
Right. That's something I think the community center board is absolutely in favor of, that we need to have some legacy funding somewhere because we're not going to have it after this. And, you know, there are going to be things that go wrong. I have no idea how long the roof will last. I don't know, I mean, I've been here for, at the city for 13 years. It's the same roof that I'm aware of since that period of time, and I don't know if anybody else has a longer memory than that. But, you know, that would be the next big thing in time that would need to be replaced. But there aren't any other things that are major like that that I can think of that we've planned for in the capital budgets.
I think, you know, if we're going to do the patio part, I think we need to do the whole thing. I think that, that part by the doors, where the opening is right there to protect the, like, the building right there and the steps, and I think that needs to be done, too. I just, I'm kind of on the fence right now between just doing the maintenance part of it and doing the whole thing, even though this, it does look nice, you know, but like Mike says, it really going to bring us that much more income, you know? And it's just hard to tell. We don't really know that. So it's a hard decision to make. But I think if we're going to, you know, if we're not going to do just the main, if we're going to do the maintenance part of it, that's fine, but if we're going to do, if we're going to put, you know, any part of the rest of it on, then it should all be done. So I guess I'm okay with doing the whole thing. But I just, I just hope you're right about that'll bring more business into the community center because if it doesn't generate more, then we've spent a lot of money for not much more income coming in. That's, so, it's hard to tell, you know, what the future is going to bring, so. But it does look nice like that. I like the view of it, but extra money, it's a lot of money to spend.
But it's community center money.
Correct. It can't be spent for anything else except improvements and repairs on the community center. It can't be used for salaries or...
And once you have the staging to do all this in order to shut it down and then pick it up again another time...
Be very challenging in the rental side of things.
So, and I'm not saying one way or another. I'm just thinking, you know, how do we get the best bang for our buck?
Right.
And all the bucks belong to the community center.
That's correct. It can't be spent anywhere else.
Well, we're going to end up taking that wall down anyway, so that wall is definitely, it's beyond its use. So it's even common sense is that we're going to put something up there.
Right.
It's not going to be as tall a wall as that we have because that is insane to have it that big. It's just, it's a maintenance hassle and just like, and especially the vestibule part in that. If you look at that, I've been looking at that for a few years now, and I've been complaining about how the water and how the building's been separating on the west side as you walk down the ramp, the handicap ramp right there on the bottom. You can see the gap. There's probably about an inch gap now, if I remember right, between the brick in there, and the water just drains down in there. What it's doing is getting down into our foundation and it's actually ruining that whole area there. You're right, Danny. That vestibule really needs to be taken care of, that area there. Because that is a maintenance nightmare right now because of the rains. We've had more rains than we've ever had lately, and it just, there's no place for it to go. You're right, the drainage is terrible. It wasn't planned out for it. That's 50 years ago.
Right.
So what do you expect?
You've learned a lot in 50 years.
So, like I say, I'm not against the front part. I just, the concept now just got to grow to me a little bit more. But I know the things that have to be done, and that's what we need to do. And if we're going to tear the wall down, we need to probably put something in there. The trees got to go. So here we are. It's a blank slate. I'm just, I'm looking at the picture, and I'd like to see more somewhere. That's all.
If you don't do the veranda with the wall torn down now, you never will. This is your...
It's the time to do it. You're actually right.
Your opportunity to do that. You're leveraging that cost.
Oh, absolutely. That's what I'm saying is, but I don't know about the picture I see. You know, that's all. I'm in favor of probably doing something out there.
Well, the size and shape won't change. It's still going to be that rectangle.
Yeah, I know.
Well, you can do a lot. You can put a living wall up there. You can put planters up there. You can do an awful lot to enhance the look. Like I said, I'm just happy it's not a series of rectangular tables with nothing in between.
Give us a different table.
It's all the, you know, perception is...
But I know all this has to be done.
Yeah.
It really does. It's...
And the vestibule, I think it's a good idea. It's kind of, you know, provides an airlock for, it saves you energy in the long run to have that open, to have that space in there, so.
We have two doors now.
So do you need a final...
Well, I think what we'll need to do is put together a proposal for the actual design work, and you let the community center, take, board take a quick look at that and make a recommendation back to council and see how you guys want to proceed there. Now, if there's specific design elements that you like better or don't like, you know, maybe sharing that with our representatives from the community center board so that they can give you what you're looking for as we get to the final design phase. But I think this coming construction season, we'd work on the design. And I don't know that we'd be planning on doing any work until, what were we thinking? Were we thinking next fiscal year? So next fall maybe, after the summer season? That's not too far off, so they'll get working on it right away then. I appreciate you taking the time to give us the once-over once again. And thank you for taking the time to go over and spend the time at the building with the board and listening to their concerns directly. They weren't shy.
No, that was time well spent because it...
Absolutely.
You got to see it in order to know exactly what folks are talking about.
And I'd like to recommend to anybody else on council or even board members from the community center, they get someplace and they see something, take a picture of it, bring it back so that we can actually see what it looks like. You know, it'd be very helpful that we can actually see what it looks like. If you're talking about a living wall somewhere, if you've gone somewhere to an event and you see something you like, you look outside, you see it, take a snapshot. It's that quick, that easy. Everybody's got a phone. Just do it and get it to us. Then you get a picture. I mean, I can look at, I looked at Grand Landing when they came into it. It looked beautiful on paper.
It had those sailboats.
Yeah, oh my gosh.
Oh, it was awesome. The blue water.
Their rendering is totally different than when you see when it's in full face to you. So that's what I would like to recommend everybody.
Absolutely. All right. At this point, we have, we're going to take a quick two-minute break before the start of our council meeting, so we will adjourn our work session and start our council meeting momentarily. Linda, would you call the roll, please?
Vanessa?
Here.
Burgers absent. Scott?
Here.
Fritz?
Here.
Michaela?
Here. Forgot to say, this is the first meeting, January seventh of 2019. How exciting is that? Our vacation this evening will be given by Pastor Matt Schmidt, Saint Paul's United Church of Christ. Please remain standing after the prayer for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Hi, everybody. I, for Christmas this year, my mom and dad gave me a book of poetry by Mary Oliver. Shout out to, anybody like Mary Oliver? Absolutely none of you.
I do know.
One person, yeah. Awesome. This is, uh, she's a little weird, so bear with me. She, she has a poem about being mindful and so my prayer tonight is that all of you here would have that capacity to be mindful, okay? So, here we go. Every day I see or I hear something that more or less kills me with delight, that leaves me like a needle in the haystack of light. It is what I was born for, to look, to listen, to lose myself inside this soft world, to instruct myself over and over in joy and acclamation. Nor am I talking about the exceptional, the fearful, the dreadful, the very extravagant, but of the ordinary, the common, the very drab, the daily presentations. Oh, good scholar, I say to myself, how can you help but grow wise with such teachings as these? The untrimmable light of the world, the oceans shine, the prayers that are made out of grass. Dear God, thank you for the first city council meeting of the year and thank you for every single person in this room. What a gift that they can all be here in this place. I pray that you would bless each of us with kindness and compassion and a good, healthy dose of sincere empathy for one another. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you.
Okay, then. We are just, we don't have any of these other things on the agenda, so we're gonna go right to the approval of the consent and regular agendas and are there any changes?
I have none, Your Honor.
Anybody up here wanna propose something? Okay, in that case, I need a motion to accept the agendas as presented?
So moved and seconded.
It's been moved and seconded and unless there are comments or questions, we will be ready to vote.
Vanessa?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Fritz?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes. The general business call the audience, this is one of two opportunities for anyone to address council on anything that they have on their mind. So, if you would like to take that opportunity, just come on up to the microphones, tell us who you are, where you live, and make your comments. And if nobody wants to take advantage of that, we will move on and we'll call it going once, going twice, to the consent agenda. Okay, Linda, will you read the consent agenda?
To approve the regular council work session and executive session minutes of December seventeenth, 2018. Council meeting minutes in there also. Approve the bill's memo in the amount of eight hundred and forty thousand, fifty-two dollars and sixty cents. Approve a discharge of mortgage for the property at eleven twenty-six Fulton owned by Daniel Boma and Anita Boma and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the necessary documents. Approve the terms of an amendment to M dot contract twenty eighteen dash oh five five nine slash A one in the amount of four hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars for the design and construction to rehabilitate the apron, hanger, taxiways, design of the beacon light, crack ceiling, and paint markings and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the necessary documents.
All right, is there a motion?
I'd like to make that motion.
Have been moved and seconded. Does anyone have any comments or questions on any of these four items on the consent agenda?
So, on the M dot contract, what is our match on that?
I invited Tom Anderscheid so we'd get that exactly right. I believe the addition, we have no match on that, but I'll...
Yeah, there's no additional match?
No, this is just extending, moving some money around so that we can get more of the crack seal portion done, which actually was already done as part of this last summer's work. So, this is just how the, the professionals at M dot Arrow and our, our engineer got together and figured out how to move the money around to cover that additional cost. So, it doesn't cost us anything extra.
That's good news.
Yes. Thank you.
Good work.
Tom's back.
You can't leverage your money much better than that, can you?
Nope. Well, here we are for another twenty years, right? All right. If we have no other questions, we are ready to vote.
Scott?
Yes.
Fritz?
Yes.
Vanessa?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
And item one in new business.
Item is to approve the Raw Dogs skydiving event to be held at the Grand Haven Municipal Airport and City Beach on August fifteenth through eighteenth, 2019 and waive the park rental fee of three thousand dollars for the use of City Beach. The airport board, parks board, and administration recommend approval.
All right, is there a motion?
So moved.
And support.
And it's been moved and seconded a couple times.
Yeah.
Fairly supported.
Go to the bottom.
So, Pat, you wanna talk about this or is...
The, the only thing I'd like to make real clear is the three thousand dollar use of City Beach and we put a very high cost on that for people that might wanna occupy and use the whole beach exclusively. They're not really talking about that. They'll have a landing area that periodically people, so the, the request for the waiver is really not a, unexpected. You know, I wouldn't expect somebody to pay three thousand dollars to, you know, land a few ti, you know, they're gonna have a number of jumpers, I understand, but it's not something they're gonna close down the beach. The beach will still be there for everybody's enjoyment and they'll probably add a little enjoyment watching people fall out of the skies.
People falling out of the sky.
If you, if you could, you could have them come up to...
I do have some questions, so if, if that's, if you guys are the raw dogs.
Oh, they are.
Come on up.
I remember, I got your card at home. I was at the Parks and Rec Board and they're, and these diver, the ones that are coming down, these are top-notch, you know, diver.
Well, this was my question. Are you gonna land on the beach or are you gonna land in the water or somewhere else?
Intent is definitely to land on the beach.
Explain who you are and what, what it is and everything so we know people at home can see what you're doing and explain a little bit more about what's happening out there.
My name is Joe Thompson of Raw Dogs and this is Angie Durensky. So, we've been running this event for the last seven years in different locales in Michigan. Sorry. So, we've been running this event for the last seven years in Michigan and looking to move this to Grand Haven because we think that better represents the state and what makes it interesting to the skydivers around the country. This is an event that is fairly unique in skydiving and that is the only event that has every type of skydiving occurring in the air. The intent is to bring in two aircraft, several hundred experienced skydivers from, from around the country and the beach landings is just kind of a plus. The majority of the landings will happen at the airport, so it'll just be designated times during the day that will allow skydivers to sign up with the correct proficiency to land in a designated landing area on the beach. The, so it won't be cordon off for the full day and it won't be anywhere near the full amount of the beach. The idea was to use about a fifty by hundred-foot section in front of the Bill Maher, so the far, as far south as we need to go because we definitely want to avoid as much congestion as we can. But we'll have it marked off ahead of time and there'll be radio control on the ground to make sure that the conditions are safe to release skydivers from the airport.
So, is it tricky playing with the, the winds interfacing between the land and the, and the water?
It can be, but we definitely take a, a very close look at the, the wind forecast and we're very fortunate that this location is close to Muskegon, which does a full winds of law forecast, so it helps us out quite a bit.
Okay.
So, the, our, the report, the weather reports here are more accurate than elsewhere when it comes to those wind conditions.
Okay, 'cause there's, there's power lines not that far away. I just, I think, that kinda thing would just, I know you got insurance, but...
Yeah, so definitely power lines are to be avoided.
And adds to the excitement. So, the, the fifty by one hundred-foot area on the beach, this is an area that's going to have a barrier or cordon on it when you're using it?
Yeah, we'll probably just use survey tape.
Okay.
And that's just...
So then...
You could just walk right through it if, if you...
Will you be... Right, so, so when you are doing your landings, this will, you say this won't be all day, this will be intermittent, this will be periodically, so it'll be opened and closed and open and closed?
Yes.
Or will it be closed for the duration and then reopened at the end?
It certainly doesn't need to be. It would, it would be probably three times during the day, morning, afternoon.
So, you'd, you'd run out there and set it back up and tell people to get out of there and then do your landings and then open it back up and people could be on it?
Yep, and having, having a...
You're planning to clear it in between, so it's truly a non-exclusive use. It's going to be...
Right.
A, a fairly brief period and then it's reopened and then closed again for a fairly brief period. So, the impact on users of the beach are pretty minimal. Yeah, and you don't need to be right up near the city, city beach parking lot, so that, that would help too.
The intent is to use the area south of there.
Okay. Yeah, I don't really see it as a big intrusion on the beach. If it were all day in a large area and nobody was allowed in, I'd feel a little differently about that. It sounds like it would be more like a few minutes of excitement and then back to, back to normal.
That's my thinking. I'd, I'll be, I'll be there. I'll just watch it float in.
Yeah, I was at the Parks and Rec Board when you made your presentation to them. They asked you to come back. They tabled it for, uh, to the next meeting and you came back, explained exactly what you're telling everybody here tonight and it would, sounds very, very interesting and it sounds like it'll be quite a draw. I mean, it's very interesting to see that many divers in the air. It's how, you're saying you had multiple divers at times, so it's gonna be kinda cool to sit out there and, and hope you advertise it well and get people out here. It'd be quite a good thing for us.
Yeah, I mean, other than the use of the beach and obviously the approval of the event, we're also looking for any help you can give us on good weather and that's, there's several, there's several state records within our reach in skydiving that we can set here in Grand Haven this year.
You are in Grand Haven. So, that's all we, as we always look at, it's been very good for us, so.
So, does, does good weather have to be part of our motion?
We can leave it up to mayor. The mayor can make a, we'll make the mayor make a proclamation for good weather.
It's gonna be after Coast Guard Festival, so you're taking your chances 'cause it never rains during Coast Guard Festivals.
I was at the airport board meeting when you brought it up there at the, and it seems like all the safety precautions you could think of, you guys were aware of and it's sound like you guys got it under control, so I'm fully supportive of it. Hope you have good weather.
So, you're saying that, how many, how many jumpers are gonna come and probably participate in this?
Uh, last year, our registration and walk-on registration of local Michigan skydivers exceeded two hundred.
Are there any like clubs that, that jump, you know, groups, I've seen this where people jump together and, and do acrobatics in the air. There may be any, give you some advertising time here.
Yeah, absolutely. Every type of skydiving that can be done in the air will be done at this event.
Okay.
So, the different ways that people link up in the air wearing wing suits. What we personally participate in is smashing open parachutes together and making formations with those in the sky, which are a lot easier to see than anything else.
Sure.
Um, they can be very colorful. Um, wing suits, formation, skydiving of all different types, parachute formations.
Well, this would be pretty cool. I, it's not something I thought, you know, saw, you know, come in Grand Haven's way, but I, this, this sounds like a really cool event, so I'm, yeah, we wish you guys good weather and good wind, so, or no wind, I don't know.
It'd be good for our airport, too.
That's the right amount of wind, okay?
It'll be good to showcase our airport.
Oh, my gosh. Well, that too. Any other, any other questions, comments, anything else you wanna say? We just... All right, well, thanks for coming and, and we'll put this on the calendar. This sounds like it'd be an interesting event.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Our, our new calendar is gonna be beach life, so this'll be another page and... Absolutely. Well, we gotta vote on this.
We gotta vote now.
All right.
Be wise.
Fritz?
Yes.
Vanessa?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
It's defying gravity, I think this makes it so exciting. Next item.
Next item is to approve the Department of Public Works lead service line replacement policy as presented. The administration recommends approval.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
It's been moved and supported and Derek's already there. He's ready to go.
My shirt's, Derek Gaitis, Director of Public Works. My shirt's not as bright as the U M F O, but...
That's right. You kinda toned it down.
I am, just a little.
Must be somber.
This is a new start?
It's not, it's not my resolution for two thousand nineteen, just tonight.
Well, it's got a little check in it though, right?
Yes.
Yeah, well, that's kinda pizzazzzy, right?
All right.
So, as you are all aware, the, the Governor Snyder passed a new rules, not legislation, into effect back in June of eighteen that affects our lead service lines and how we treat them and how we gotta replace them. And while the city has numerous lead service lines, we don't have a full inventory yet, but we can assume about forty-five percent of them of our service lines are considered new, uh, lead, another new definition. We have to replace those, but, and we can do that. And in my, in my memo, the outline to do the cities portion, which we would've done anyways, runs between two thousand, twenty-five hundred dollars a piece and over the, the required twenty-year term to replace those amounts to about four to five million dollars. So, half million dollars a year to replace our lead service lines. However, the, the big contention in, in the new rules the governor signed was we are responsible to replace the private portion of the service line as well. Now, over the last six months, the implementation of this new rule, some municipalities have balked at it and some of them had, have threatened to sue the state that it actually violates the state constitution. There's some big municipalities on these side of state that are lining those litigations up and they're not, you know, they're in the, the probably forty to fifty municipalities from, from my understanding. So, in the meantime, we've got to figure out what we need to do here in Grand Haven and we had our first lead service line break back in November, which we did pay a local private company to replace the private portion and amounted to about five hundred and sixty dollars roughly. So, in the meantime, while this litigation is being hashed out or we find funding to do this on a long-term basis, we propose to, to cap that, the cost that we are gonna participate in the lead service line replacement for the private portion only at five hundred dollars per resident. We don't have an active replacement program. Now, it's all done on an emergency basis, but in two thousand twenty is when the active, we'll have to replace about fifty services a year, sorry, a hundred services a year for the next twenty years. So, we'll, now this is just kind of a stopgap in between we, we implement a full lead service line replacement program.
How are we gonna identify those places, Eric?
Well, so the state, one of the, part of the new rule was this by, by two thousand, January first, two thousand twenty, so a year from now, we have to have a, a preliminary inventory based on the information that we have at hand. Some municipalities have great information, some of them don't have as, as detailed information on those service lines, so the preliminary can be based on assumptions that we have to report to the DEQ on what those assumptions were. And so, right now, we have records that do show what the cities portion is at least and, and we're detailing those right, detailing those now on our inventory. So, we got pretty good information. It's not perfect. About five percent of those that we've, we've done about seventy-five percent of the inventory to date, so, and about five percent of those are unknown. The rest of them, we do have information on those.
You're better than I thought. I didn't think we had that good of information on them. them, I was, we have mechanical joints, we have leaded joints, you know, and, and I don't know how you can determine where the leaded joints are and the mechanical joints are, and then even where the mechanical joints are, we have some leaded joints for services in those areas, so...
Yes.
You know, it's, it's gonna be, I, I think it's gonna be awful hard to identify those areas.
It's, it's, it's not easy, however, by two thousand twenty-five, we're required to have a verified inventory, so that is physically dig them up and verify what materials they are. Now, the new definition of lead service line is anything that has galvanized pipe along with it, so it's not just a lead pipe, it's not just a lead connector, they call them a gooseneck, but if it has galvanized piping, that's part of the new definition, so we have records that show that we've installed iron pipe, which is what, it doesn't matter if it's really lead, it's got iron in it, it's an iron pipe, then, then it's, it's the definition, it meets the definition of lead service line, so right now, forty-five percent of what we've inventoried, it would be classified as a lead service line, so about half the city.
Can you take samples of individual houses and find out how much lead there's in those, and use that for, use those samples for, you know, the greater lead content, you would probably be doing those for, I would think, you know, but I don't know, but...
Yeah, and as long as you don't disturb the lead service lines, actually that lead stays inside the, the cracks and crevices of a tubercalated iron pipe, but it's when, it's when you change that, so it's when you disrupt that.
So, wouldn't it be better to just leave them the heck alone?
Well, so, yeah.
That's historically what's been done.
Yeah, so, part of the requirements is you can't replace half of it anymore, which, which is where we came into in November with, with that one service line, ours broke, and, you know, the new rule says you can't, can't leave the homeowners galvanized, it has to be replaced. Now, some municipalities have come up with different policies to, to, to address that, maybe they do, maybe they don't, maybe they participate, so this is what we thought would be best in the interim, for our residents anyways, until some of that litigation irons out and we have some better data, better numbers, and a, and a full policy to bring, bring back, so...
So, when we had a service break, now we have to pay for both sections, the property owner's section and our section.
Yeah, and so we've had a second one recently that was on the property owner's side, so it's like, okay, well, we'll replace ours, that's fine, I mean, that, they're paying for those, theirs, we'll pay for, we'll pay for ours, turns out ours was already copper anyways, so it was just the homeowners. No, there's additional sampling that's required, so as soon as that break is done, we have to sample, we have to sample thirty days later and report those to the property owner and the DEQ, so, you know, there's, there's, this is just one small portion of our, of the new rule, that we, we felt that we need, as the council's authorization, before, before we implement a full program.
Let me ask you, the lead and copper rule requires that the municipality has to replace the line all the way to the meter inside the house, and that's, that's city's expense, and that's my understanding of the rule, and it's being fought in court, there's been litigation to overturn at least that portion, if not the entire rule, and you're proposing to cap what the property owner would have to pay, or to cap what we would contribute, or somehow you wanna find a halfway measure to pay part of it, not all of it, what's the basis for that, and how does that fit into any of this argument, 'cause it seems like it's an all or nothing argument?
Yeah, so some municipalities actually do own the service line all the way to the meter, so, and most, most municipalities do not, so some of this, this new rule didn't affect them, and five hundred dollars was, was our first witness to that, where we worked with a property owner, we contributed five hundred plus dollars, figure that's a, a fair enough assessment, it doesn't give the, the water system customers an overabundance of liability on those private lines, but it does, it does address or help refund, we would refund the, reimburse, I should say, those homeowners if they chose to, to do that.
We do to the, you know, from, from the main to the shut-off, that, that's our portion of it, and then from the shut-off to the meter is their portion of it, are we gonna do that in-house, or are we gonna, you're gonna have a plumber do that from, from the, the shut-off into the meter?
Our plan is to have the homeowner contract with a plumber, or contractor to replace from the curb stop to the home, to the meter.
Okay, all right.
And then we would reimburse them up to five hundred dollars.
Okay.
Okay, well, getting back to the question I was asking, you've come up with a five hundred dollar number based on one or two experiences, of, that seems like a reasonable number, but the rule says, as currently stands, that we can't cap that, we have to pay that cost, correct?
That's correct, rule, the governor's...
And, and if the rule is overturned, we wouldn't, we would only pay something if we thought it was fair to do, and so, 'cause my question, if we're going to institute this, while everything is still up in the air, this seems like an arbitrary number just jumped at so that we'd have something on paper, which may or may not stand up to later events, why would we, unless we think it's our obligation to pay five hundred dollars, why are we offering to pay anything, or why are we not just going with the rule and saying we're gonna pay everything, I mean, we're, the five hundred dollars seems like, it really doesn't fit anywhere in this scheme.
Based off the, the first one that we, did we experience, actually, that's what we have close to that invested in, the first one, it was an average home on the east side of the town, so it might cover most of it, if not all of it, but it won't cover something that's, you know, it'd be a two thousand dollar repair, where they have extraordinary circumstances.
But still, if the rule stands, you'd have to pay the rest of that anyway.
Yeah, the, the, the rule says it doesn't govern how we, we, we could charge them for it individually or as a flat fee on all customers, doesn't, it doesn't stipulate how we recover our costs.
No, it doesn't say that you can recover your costs.
It, it doesn't say we can't, yeah, so the, it's, the rules as it was being laid out is that it was up to the municipality or the, or the water system to, if they wanted to recover those costs, which, you know, three to four million dollars, and the water system can't cover that over the next twenty years for the private portion without raising fees, so you raise the fee specifically for that, you know, or do you include it in, you know, just the regular rate that we charge, they left that wide open, you can do it either or.
Yeah, I'm not, I guess I'm not satisfied that we're really addressing what we're required to do or what we should do here, sounds like we're taking a stab at it and hoping that it works based on a little bit of anecdotal evidence.
Do we, the other thing is, is that if this is, if what the Governor's rule is unconstitutional, and if it's in court, or if it's going to go to court, and if we have so many other things that we have to fix around town, that we have to fix something that may or may not be broken, or that, that, yeah, there's lead in, in, in the line, or it's galvanized, but you're not, it's not really coming through your, through your faucet, it's kinda like, you know, fixing something that's not broken, when we have a lot of things that are broken that need to be fixed, so I, I find this, and then if it's gonna end up in court, so we really don't know what the outcome is gonna be, is, do we have to have this in place by a date, is that, why, I'm, I'm not exactly sure with all of this up in the air why we're doing this right now.
Well, the, according to the Governor's rule, and he signed in June of two thousand eighteen, we're just mandated to pay the entire cost, and that we can't replace a partial service, so we can't replace ours, what happens when it breaks?
Right, right, then the...
Cut them off and...
Then the cost is compelled for the rest of it.
And there, there is empirical data that shows that once you replace a portion, one half of the service, that you do have increased lead from the activities of the construction, they, they found that out in, in Flint, that as they did partial lead service lines, that, that that lead levels did rise over time, hence the seventy-two hour samples that we have to take and the thirty-day ones, that it does, so if it isn't broken, well, it technically isn't, but when it does break, you do have an increase in lead that comes through the service.
So, at that point, if part of it breaks, you just have to replace the whole thing, but that doesn't say that you have to go out and look for problems?
Yeah, the, the full, the full rule implementation two thousand twenty says you gotta replace five percent, period.
Right.
And if, and if we go above the, the MCL for lead, as Flint did, it rises from five percent to seven percent per year of services, so you have to do it quicker.
So, how often do we test our, our water that's coming out of your faucet?
We test every three years currently, we're up to, we're due here in two thousand nineteen, and, and we've never exceeded the MCL for lead here in Grand Haven, so, you know, we, I don't anticipate us going to, to a seven percent replacement schedule, however, that, that is based on a MCL of fifteen parts per million, where they're actually in two thousand twenty-five lowering it to twelve, so now, now the tolerance gets a little tighter and, and...
Tests are a little bit more...
Yeah.
Accurate.
So, so, I don't think we would, we would hit that increased, you know, replacement schedule, but, but it's a potential.
So, if I'm listening here, and Bob, and Bob's got a good concern there is, on the five hundred dollar thing, is that, okay, the Governor is mandating us, but we don't know if it's legal or not, but, so we're just gonna automatically do the five, we're just getting to the five hundred, I don't, if, say our, our line breaks and they have lead there, they're required to, it's required to change it all anyways, right?
Right.
To break from the house all the way, and if, say, say if our line is a lead line that breaks out there, if there's more down, they have to take, we have to take care, or not us, we don't know what the ruling is yet, but it needs to be done one way or the other, but we're gonna, we're gonna throw five hundred dollars out there, not knowing if we really have to throw the five hundred dollars yet, because we don't know what the ruling really is yet, I mean, it doesn't...
Well, it's a, it's an in-between, it's a happy medium, hopefully, between doing nothing, not giving them anything.
Well, I guess that's my point, is that you picked a number in-between, but the real numbers are either zero or everything.
Right, yeah.
And the five hundred dollars is just a number that's been chosen, that really doesn't mount, that really doesn't represent anything except inexperience.
It does help the property owner out with their portion of it, though, you know, and I understand that, I think that, I don't, I, I don't object to that, I think that's, that's probably a good thing we could do right now, but if, if our side is leaded and their side is copper, do we still have to change that copper too? No, we don't, we can leave their copper in, and we don't have to change it, okay, all right, we don't have to change our, our portion of it, and we leave, I, I know several locations that that happened, you know, where the, their service would break and they would replace it with copper, but our service would still be the old service, so, so, okay, all right, okay.
And this isn't just broken lines, this is five percent of all the lines, broken or otherwise.
Because you gotta go looking for them.
We gotta go looking for them, and so, so you're talking about broken lines now and it keeps coming up as broken lines, no, it's not broken lines.
I don't have any problem with fixing broken lines, I just, I just, going out and looking for lines, because you have to meet five percent or seven percent quota is...
Well, it comes back now, and it's unconstitutional, and we've decided now, later on, that we don't need to put the five hundred dollars in, 'cause it's not, and it's up to the owner to take care of it, what do we do in the meantime, I mean, I don't mind helping people a little bit, but we're kinda like in a catch twenty-two thing here right now, what do you, what do you do?
So, one of the other things, so the, the replacement schedule, that's not being contested by the, by the municipalities, we, we have these lead service lines out there, we need to replace them.
Yes.
There's communities like Lansing that haven't replaced them, and they're all gone, they took a twenty-year period from the nineties through the two thousands and replaced every one of them, but there's communities like, like Grand Haven where we haven't, so they're, they're mandating those, and...
Too bad they didn't fix their sewer out, right?
Yeah, it's, it's, the, the litigation is really over the private portion, so municipalities take responsibility, they don't have a problem with it, municipalities like Grand Haven and every municipality that I've worked for has never taken ownership of that, so it's the, it's that private portion that they're, they're contesting.
Right, and that's what the five hundred dollars addresses.
Yeah, in between now and, and so, you know, it's...
We're gonna go looking for lines right now, you want, you wanna start, you wanna start this this spring, is that when you wanna start this?
So, we'll have to start, and we have to have the full inventory that's, that's verified by two thousand twenty-five, so six years from now, our preliminary inventory is due next year, that'll give us an idea of where we need to go look for lines, obviously we don't need to look at copper ones, but if they're galvanized, or if they're unknown, right now we have currently, three-quarters of the way through inventory, there's three-hundred seventy-seven of them that we don't know, is a, is a lead, what kind of material it is, so, I'm not saying we gotta dig up two thousand of them in the city, but by two thousand twenty-five, the, the ruling is, is we have to have an actual knowledge of what those materials are in inventory that's accurate, so, one of the things we can do is get inside the homes and see if there's galvanized pipe coming in, that would tell us right there that it's a lead service line, so, some of it isn't just digging up, but if it's copper, and we think we haven't, just like you said, you know, we, the homeowner already replaced it, but we, we think it's an iron pipe, we'll have to, we'll have to verify that it is, and, and then, and then replace it, so...
Copper, take mine off the list. I installed it all myself, I had a guy come in and do it probably about ten, fifteen years ago.
Oh, thank you, Councilman Fritz.
So, there's one, it probably, I don't know if it's been checked off or not, but it used to have the lead pipe in there.
I'll, I'll look tomorrow for sure.
And I had, had all new sewer and new water put in, so, one less you gotta look for, help you out.
So, you don't get the five hundred bucks?
I, I did it myself, I paid for it.
Pull a permit.
Been inspected?
It was inspected. Not myself, myself, I had a plumber.
Like myself?
I paid for it myself.
See out there with your hag saw and your glue?
So, giving you lead service signs in the long run is the best for our whole community and all of our water systems, it's just, how are we gonna fund this?
Well, and I understand that the contested portion is the private portion, 'cause public money's being spent on private properties then, that's been the big contested thing all along, I guess the thing I'm still trying to get straight in my head is why five hundred dollars is a meaningful number in this discussion, and it sounds like we're just putting it out there as, this'll help, and if we think we wanna do things that are helpful, okay, I understand that, but I don't see how it addresses these issues.
Well, it's somewhat of a placeholder, as we wait and see how things shake out, and it, it limits our exposure, you know, if we just say we're gonna pay for it out of the water fund, who knows some of the unique conditions that could be out there, and if somebody's got a rather elaborate old connection that requires tearing out a lot of landscaping, taking down trees, you know, removing sidewalk and retaining walls and other things, and you get into a multi-thousands-of-dollars situation, well, that's perhaps appropriate to assign those costs to that property owner, they're the ones that installed it that way, or some prior owner there, versus the majority of them that should be fairly straightforward and simple, and five hundred dollars, at least something that we can understand and attempt to budget for, you know, so I, I think Derek was just trying to be as practical as possible, knowing that the final upshot's likely to change in some respect, and that, you know, and the Governor suggested, or advised, or presented, proposed a lot of different ideas about how to pay for this, you know, he was trying to get a statewide assessment on all water users, that would then go into a state fund, and then we'd have to apply for that money to get it back to work on this, and that failed, but there's a good possibility this next legislature, the new Governor, might propose something different, hopefully something that we can apply locally and keep the money local and, and make the fixes ourselves without, you know, without the help of Lansing taking our money away from us and then deciding how to redistribute it.
Chances of that.
Well, they wouldn't do that, would they?
Well, so, I guess it was just an effort to try to give us something, you know, Derek's, you know, got a lot of...
Okay, so, if this is just...
This lends some certainty to it.
This is just an effort to get your arms around the cost for budgeting, budgeting purposes, that's one thing, if, that's not what this says, this says we will reimburse five hundred dollars, and so, as a placeholder, it's a pretty definite place that it's holding, so, I guess that's where I have a reservation about this, is that, I don't, there again, I don't think that it really addresses how this cost should be assigned or paid, if you're talking about all these extra ancillary costs, such as tearing out landscaping and replacing it, as opposed to just digging a trench and putting a pipe in it, then maybe there's a place there you can break it down and just pay for the pipe in the trench, and that's fine, but, and that probably would fit the rule, that's, none of that stuff is discussed here, it's just a flat number, five hundred bucks.
Yeah, I mean, we could, we could ultimately advise, or have a, a policy that, that gives them the copper, you know, tubing, you know, and say, here, we'll, we'll, we'll provide the materials for free.
Loan on a shovel?
Yeah, or, you know, hire a contractor to do so, you know, that, that could be part of it, but in the end, the rule says you have to replace it right now when you replace one, so...
Well, you, you obviously do, I understand, I understand the mechanics of that, that you're going to leach out whatever material is in that pipe as soon as you disturb it.
You're gonna have people that, we'll just hire a contractor instantaneously, and you have, you have people that won't be able to afford that. You're gonna have people that will just hire a contractor instantaneously and you have, you have people that won't be able to afford that. So it's, it's not an easy solution. Sorry, brought it from you.
No, I just, you know, there's another, there's another part of this. There's an awful, you know, there's not that many plumbers. Right, you, you're gonna be on a waiting list.
Yes, and, and we've talked about that internally, the staff, about, um, we've got a couple of good excavators that replace this, these type of lines all the time. But, um, if we've got to do five hundred of them, uh, I'm sorry, a hundred of them a year, you know, Grand Haven Township might not have too many, but Ferrisburg, you know, um, Spring Lake Village, Spring Lake Township. I mean, there's, getting them from Skeggen or Holland, um, they're all over the communities. There's gonna be a lot of, um, of need for those, those contractors, so...
Absolutely.
Yeah, absolutely. It, and, and even our, our portion, replacing a hundred of them a year, um, now that's a, that's a good half million dollars a year in costs. And then, you know, do we, um, things that we have still gotta figure out, do we do them internally? Do we hire someone to, to do them, you know, to do a hundred services a year? You know, it's probably putting on a couple of personnel to, you know, to accomplish that. We can't take that type of work on. I can't absorb it.
And the funding for it.
Right.
Yeah, so...
Where's it gonna come from?
There's lots of things to, to work out in the next year. Um, you'll, you'll be hearing from me again for sure. In fact, we're even talking about, uh, part of the requirement starting to replace five percent is in the next fiscal year that we're budgeting for right now. Starting in, you know, it'll start in July because that'll end up first half two thousand twenty.
Do they need to be a licensed plumber, Derek, to do that side, the property owner's side or not? They can just be an excavator?
No, no, you, um, a licensed plumber, because they have to do, they might have to do some changes inside to the, to the, by the meter.
Hook it up on the inside, okay, all right, yeah. But to run the line, they don't, just hook that in the end, yeah, okay, I got you, okay, all right, yeah.
Not a small topic.
Yeah, I'm not, I don't know.
Right now, this five hundred is for, um, like we have emergencies and stuff like that?
We've had one since June, so...
Okay, and that's what...
So right now, this is for people, their, their water main breaks, or our, or our break on our side where we can replace the whole thing at one time. That's all, this is all, this is all this is doing. You, this isn't, this isn't saying you're gonna go out there and find, find them right now and go looking for them. These are just gonna be breaks?
Yeah.
That's not what this, that's not what this says.
But that's not, you gotta start looking for them, right, this year?
Yeah, but next, yeah, we just have to have it done by two thousand twenty-five, so I would say we start two thousand twenty sometime, start looking for them, um, because it's gonna take us a while.
But we can budget that now. We can budget at the budget session. Now, we will talk about that budget session. But right now, all you wanna do is get five hundred dollars for the property owners that their lines break or our lines break on the other side to do it. That's all you're asking for.
Just for the emergency stuff, because we're not, we're not, we're not scheduling any, anything.
Then we're talking about the rest of budget time. I have no problem with that.
Well, when we talk about it at budget time, like I said, there's an awful lot of things that we know are broken that need to be fixed. So now we're gonna go looking for problems that are not problems. Okay.
That's a budget, that's a budget.
Makes sense to me. It sounds like government at work. Okay, I think, you know...
All right, so, so in this, this three paragraph summary of the proposed policy, in the first paragraph it says, "City will reimburse property owner up to five hundred dollars for replacement of private water service from curb stop to structure home when or if the city replaces the water service either by scheduled replacement or emergency replacement." So that's scheduled replacement, you're not talking about the mandated five percent per year?
No, not right now, but if, if we had to, if we had to replace something, I scheduled it for next week. It's not a true emergency, something we had to do.
Well, you're, this is kinda another case. It's not the mandated scheduled replacements, but it's also not a break.
Right, yes. It's just, uh, this is just a stopgap policy to get us to what we want to ultimately, hopefully, it'll be litigated by then, um, which I don't know.
Because as, as I read it, it was all these replacements.
Oh.
When you say scheduled replacements, you're talking about the ones that are this five percent schedule you have to do every year.
Yeah.
So you're not talking about that.
No, no, not the five percent that we'll, we'll start doing next year. We'll, we'll figure that out before, uh...
Let's make sure that that's clear in this policy, because I don't think it is.
I'll be bringing, uh, back forward a, a full policy to the, to the council to approve. It will include all of those.
So what are we doing tonight?
Before two thousand twenty.
So we're approving this policy as is presented to us tonight. We're voting on it.
Yep.
So this doesn't run through, what, so is there a date on this?
There's not, but, but my plan is to, to propose a full policy with all of that, that, that addresses the five percent in the investigation costs and all that stuff during two thousand nineteen. But before we get into the, those other requirements, we'll have a...
So we're, we're gonna be voting on a policy or a resolution, which is, is not written in resolution format for a policy that was not written yet?
Well, this will be a policy that we'll implement through two thousand nineteen.
I'm just looking at procedurally what we're being asked to do tonight. We have, we have a not, we have a policy that's not really in the form of a policy and a resolution, not in the form of a resolution.
So would it hurt for us to put this off till our next meeting?
No, that'd be fine.
So we can get that straightened out?
But, you know, it, in the memo, in the body of the memo, there's a three paragraph policy that I think is what is being...
Yeah, I see, and I see quote marks around it.
Yeah, and the resolution is to adopt that as your policy for now, to give us something in writing for Derek to use to, to address any emergency or scheduled city water line replacements that happen between now and December. Now you gotta...
Yeah, I see, all that stuff, all that stuff is not written down here, so those, that timeframe and what the schedule means and all this stuff is not really clear in here.
It doesn't, doesn't need to wait till next meeting.
Particularly, particularly that timeframe.
Yeah, it doesn't need, we're, we can add that.
This is like it was just kinda written down quickly and put in front of us because you have some urgency in what you're trying to accomplish. I can appreciate the urgency and just think that when we take a formal action, you know, it'll be on formal words.
Yeah, I'm okay with doing it from, from right now till, you know, the budget time in six months from now and then. We get to the budget sessions, talk about it then, you know, and then, then, then if we're gonna redo it for that, for the whole, for the whole fiscal year. But, you know, I, you know, I, I, I don't wanna, I don't really wanna go past our fiscal year with this right now. I think that's, this is stopgap right now from now till July first. But when we start looking at our budget proposal, then we have to, I think we have to really get this thing down to where we really want it, you know? But, so I'm, like I said, I, I don't wanna go for the whole year, but I would like to go for fiscal year right now from, for our six months, and then we get in the budget session time, we can really get this thing hammered out and get, 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 get all the details in it. So that, that's where I'm at.
Well, if it pleases council, I'd like to propose we postpone this action until we get this language cleaned up a little bit and those timeframes put onto it and all the other details that we discussed written down.
Are you making a motion?
That was my motion.
What was this?
I'll second it.
All right.
Just making sure.
Maybe I used too many words.
All right, we're gonna, we're gonna vote on tabling the, you want...
Postponing.
Postponing, sorry.
Just postponing.
You're just gonna postpone, okay.
Vanessa?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
Your work is not done.
He thought he might not have to come in two weeks.
Yeah.
Nice try.
Something else? You got another truck to buy or something?
Well, probably.
All right.
You can look forward to what his wardrobe looks like in two weeks. We'll see then yours.
All right, report by city council. Who wants to start? Happy New Year.
Had a great New Year.
Good.
Although, saw the new and improved ball come down.
It was colorful.
It certainly was.
It was warm.
And it was dry.
It was dry.
For a short time.
For a short time.
Yeah.
Long enough.
I didn't make it. I had family members were in, they were sick and they didn't wanna take a chance of going down there and having it pour on them again, so we stayed in, but I wanna wish everybody at home a happy New Year and welcome back. This is two thousand nineteen and hope it proves out to be a great year for us.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, the same thing, you know, we, every time you, you know, come into a new year, it's all brand new and, uh, blank slate, and we'll write our own destiny here, so it's gonna be, it's gonna be a good year. Happy New Year to everybody and, uh, good night. Well, no.
No, no, we're not done.
Because we gotta give it to the city manager to tell us about, oh, this always fun art, always fun conversation about Coast Guard Festival carnival location.
Well, I like that. I was writing down it's a blank slate and we will write our own destiny. So we can write our own destiny in terms of where the Coast Guard might be located in the future. It seems like the last, I put together a brief report for you just to give something in the packet, a little bit of background, and you all remember quite well, I'm sure, the last couple of times we've looked at this and really not made any substantive changes. But the, the DDA did vote to ask the city to study the location and I, if I had a crystal ball, I would say we, we could do that this year and likely wind up with the carnival on Washington. If you do relocate it, you're probably going to have a different group of people that don't like where it is. But, and it's not universal, but it, they did do a survey and I, I believe I had provided a copy of that survey previously in a, a report to you. You know, what the downtown business owners had to say following the, uh, two thousand and eighteen Coast Guard. And of course, there were two things that came out of that. One had to do with food trucks, the other had to do with carnival location, and I didn't wanna hit you with both of them at one meeting last time. So you talked about the food trucks and we kinda got some, some feel for where you're at on that. And as far as the location of the carnival, you know, there, there may be some changes in the future to the landscape downtown in terms of the, the geometry of Harbor Drive, if we end up redoing Harbor Drive down towards Snug Harbor and maybe that gives you, if we get some lines underground, it perhaps opens up some areas to spread out a little bit and, and redefine where the carnival is. But for now, uh, I don't know. If, if you'd like us to, we'd be very happy to pull the stakeholders together like we did last time, have a series of meetings, present ideas, go out and walk around in the springtime, but, um, you know, the, the, just last thing is, uh, public safety and the Coast Guard are getting together this winter to look at security issues and look at changes that might be made to, to avoid some of the security headaches we've seen in past years. But other than that, I, I guess I just leave it up to city council of what you want to do with the DDA request that you study the location.
I've been on here, well, just as long as you've been here, Pat, and we've had this discussion and it comes up, as you just quoted, at same location because of too many obstacles and too many different things to move it. I, if we're gonna start talking about moving the carnival, you know, and we talked about the food trucks last time, I'm just gonna re-echo what I said last time is that if you wanna put a death to this Coast Guard Festival, keep doing what we're doing and we're doing a great job of putting a stake in it. We need to be discussing this with, um, the DDA and everybody should be discussing this with the board members of the, of the, uh, Coast Guard Festival, Inc. They shouldn't be sitting there and making decisions like this and bringing it to us. Then it, it needs to be a formidable action together. They work together at it and come up with, with something together. I thought we had a, a committee at every year that goes over and looks at, because some of the issues, I talked with, with a business owner down there and his issue, what, the reason why he wanted to move was because the kids in that was being in the congregation and I go, and I go, well, we have a committee that reevaluates the Coast Guard every year. There's, um, Shar's on there, Jeff's on there, we have, and plus there's people from businesses down there, I think was on that too. And they should be bringing that up. Our DDA's on that too. They put their input in it. They should be bringing those, those things up to them and letting them know what their concerns are so we can get it figured out better. I don't think we're gonna find a different location right now, and you're actually right, Pat, until we end up changing it. Danny and I made a proposal taking the median out down here because that's where the carnival used to be, right down along, down the waterfront, down there when we were kids growing up. Nicole Tippel Down, that's where, that's where the carnival was. But you put a median in there, you can't put in there, you got po- you've got everything else in there, you got power lines, you can't put, you can't put a Ferris wheel at it now. I mean, it's just, you get this, and it's a moneymaker for the Coast Guard, uh, festival. And then what do they do with that money? You just saw the paper here not too long ago. Government shutdown, what do they do? They're passing out gift cards and that, they're helping their families, they're helping the Coast Guard people, not just here in Grand Haven, but they help them all over. It's, they're a pretty big organization and that's how they make their money. But if we keep kinda picking away and not working together with them, pretty soon you put a, you might as well put a pitchfork in it.
No, and, okay, well, actually, we, they are working together and they are talking to each other. I had a meeting with Mike just this week, uh, talking about some of these things. And it, but, you know, the, the folks on the DDA are, you know, they, or the folks that are on Washington periodically go, you know, we really wanna get rid of this, and also being a representative body, they, you know, it starts, let's talk about it, but it has been talked about. And, you know, when I first got on council too, I thought, geez, why do we put a carnival down in the middle of our downtown when there's two hundred thousand people in town? Well, the problem is, where are you gonna go with it? So, 'cause it serves a purpose right where it is. People can, you know, go to the carnival or send their kids to the carnival, they can go do their other stuff. It's all within walking distance and it's, it's, it's nice. So the whole thing about Harbor Island, you know, move it out there, now they're saying, well, the Harbor Island is, can't support the weight of the ride. So you can't, you can't put it out there. So as, as long as, when you say to people that, okay, we, there's no, but you have to, you have to explore all this stuff so you can say to people, you know, what you're proposing isn't gonna work. So the best thing to do is talk to people, find out what their problems are. And in having this conversation, we're learning things that we didn't know before, like there's some restaurant owners down there when the carnival's going on that have water issues, water pressure issues. We gotta figure out why that's happening. You know, is it because there's so many people in town? I don't know. But it's, they don't, you know, they don't, a lot of people, they don't come forward with their issues. Nobody's asking them what their issues are, so finally, and the conversation takes place, they go, hey, could you, you know, I've got, I've got this problem because of this. Well, let's see if we can address those problems and we can live together, uh, you know, better if we can try to, you know, find out what the problems are, try to fix them, but you're not gonna do that until you have the conversation.
Absolutely, that's what I'm saying. They need to get together.
And that's, and, and so that conversation is taking place and bringing it to the forefront, it's kinda like the whole parking issue. You bring it to the forefront and then you have the conversation and you're trying to figure out what's going on. So I think, you know, this is being done, we, people are talking to each other, but it, the only thing is, it's information needs to be gathered and distributed and people have to understand, everybody's, everybody's got their, everybody's got their issues and, um, have an understanding of what each side is facing and that's the way you can solve your problems, so. But it is taking place and it's good to have the conversation periodically to remind us as to why we're, why, why it's where it is, because it works.
Well, if you dig up our history, what we did, we did a very in-depth study the last time. I mean, it was...
Right.
Really in-depth. It was not, every stone was turned over. And I don't think you're gonna turn any different stones over this time around because nothing has changed down there.
Well, but you've got some different people.
Yes.
And every once in a while, it just bubbles to the surface like, ah.
So what you do is you, you give them the information that we got and the reasons why, and then it'd be understandable. Until the demographics change down there, it's, it's the nature of the beast right now.
Well, when I first got on council in two thousand, two thousand nine, two thousand ten, this came up then. And that's when we did this last study that I'm aware of. We went through in great detail. Harbor Drive was pretty much next for, by public safety. They wanted for traffic to be an open emergency vehicles and just circulation of all these two hundred thousand people through town. So putting it back where it used to be decades ago isn't very viable, even if we did take the median out. I mean, I don't think that's gonna work. Harbor, Harbor Island, whether or not that could work or not is pretty remote. You'd probably have to pour concrete. You'd have to do something else. We keep coming back to Washington being the most viable place if you're going to have a carnival. I firmly believe that everything can be improved. You identify the problems, you address the problems, and it's unlikely you'll find a better location for the, for the carnival. If you're going to have one, it's probably going to be right about where it is. Maybe we can address the footprint of it, maybe we can address the composition of it. There was concern about, uh, some of the, uh, participants getting out of hand, getting a little too, uh...
Yes.
Jubilant or whatever word you would like to use, but, so, I mean, those are things that maybe it has more to do with how the carnival is put together and arranged. We heard a lot about food vendors and I look back through the last three years of approvals for food vendors. It's been pretty much the same every year. We never approved any in the carnival area. They just seem to come with the carnival.
They do.
So maybe, so maybe, maybe that's part of, part of how the carnival is put together and we need to have this conversation between Coast Guard Festival, merchants and ourselves. What does this carnival really consist of and who is it there to serve? Because we don't want it to go away because it is a moneymaker and it's probably not gonna go somewhere else. So let's make it so that it's worked as well as it can for all parties. So I think that there's room for compromise there and I think there's room for making it a better carnival and a safer carnival. And Coast Guard Festival is, uh, it's a big bother for most people in town for one week. Coast Guard Festival is, uh, it's a big bother for most people in town for one week, and that's kinda the way it is.
I have to agree, Bob, um, but I, we have a committee that actually meets before and after for the Coast Guard Festival. Those concerns should be brought up at then, 'cause it, it deals with public works, deals with public safety, it deals with the downtown, it deals with everything. All them people on that, on that committee, they need to go into that committee and let them go and take it and work it out.
Oh, it'd be nice.
They're all, they're all together in this.
Be nice if we saw that debriefing report after the festival. I don't know that, that comes to us. If it does, I don't remember seeing it. But, yeah, I mean, all those things that were concerns, the, I think the concerns legitimately do need to be addressed.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
I think that if you're having, um, there's a lot of talk about out of control young people, this sort of thing. Well, you know, carnival draws young people. What did you expect? But we can still make it safer and better than it was. Maybe it needs to be scaled down a bit. I'd say there's room for improvement. As far, and, and as far as studying other locations, if somebody's got an idea, by all means, let's look at it, but we've looked at a lot of ideas, and like you say, things haven't changed all that much. So, not to pour cold water on the idea of looking around, but, yeah, if we have some other idea, fine, otherwise, let's, let's work with what we got and make it better.
I don't think we should waste our staff time to doing this, all this, all this over again, repeating everything over again, 'cause it's gonna come up in the same location right now is what it is, to go and looking for another location. I think we need to add, is to address the issues that are going there in, in that committee along with the board for Grantham, you know, for the Coast Guard Festival Incorporated. Their board is what you really should be talking to. The executive director still takes those orders from them, so getting with them and both of the heads coming together and coming up with a solution to make it a better and more viable place for down there for them. That's my recommendation. I would, I don't think I'd want to need to re, looking for another location, excuse me, for it.
Okay, just felt I had to bring that forward. It did come from one of your boards and commissions, so I was just bringing it forward and letting you know that was their recommendation. That, and I, I hear you that the idea, you know, well, hey, city, do something is not crystal clear, and the, the committee that we have is, is mostly staff, and it's for staff purposes, just to talk about, we, what, what went right, what went wrong, what can we do better next year. We don't really talk about, hey, do we wanna propose moving it, 'cause to us, it's an, for the cities, you know, from staff's perspective, nobody ever says, we should look at moving it somewhere else. It's a problem because of one thing or another. The ones who say it's a problem are some of the merchants. It's a problem for them, but it's not a problem for the city, so you're right. If it's a problem for them, perhaps, uh, they might want to approach the Coast Guard Festival Board.
Yeah, absolutely.
And propose alternatives and let the Coast Guard Festival Board, and, and you've got a, um, some information from the Coast Guard Festival Executive Director pointing out what they've looked at in the past and why it works where it's at. You know, and it, and it, it does work. I mean, it is a very successful carnival, and people, given the size of the crowds, apparently, it does attract a lot of interest, 'cause you just have tons of people, uh, using it the way it is, so I, there, there's something that works about it, and there could be some argument made that, uh, you know, don't try to fix it if maybe it's not broken, but for some of the merchants, they feel that it is broken and we should do something. Somebody should do something. Well, it's not really a big problem for the city, for our public safety, for public works. We just make tweaks each year and make it a little better. And Coast Guard Festival is always very cooperative and supportive, and they make those changes, they move the rides, they set things up differently, they use different power sources, whatever the need is. They're always super responsive, so seems to get a little better each year. And I'll be happy to provide you with those after-action reports that we do and the preliminary, uh, discussions that we have. We meet in April or May, I think, to talk about the whole summer, and then we meet again in September to talk about the summer that was. And as you can imagine, usually about seventy percent of that discussion is focused on Coast Guard, 'cause that's the biggest thing.
I remember when I was going to those meetings, we talked about best place to put portage on, is the best place to put barricades, what streets begin to black off, where, where harbor transit can locate, where, you know, the best places to load up, and some of the kinds of things we did is for the staff meeting, but we didn't do anything, like you said, about moving the carnival. We didn't get into that discussion at all, just how we can make things better where the carnival is to make, make things work better. That's, that's all we, that's, that was our discussion, so, yeah.
No, and, no, nobody wants to drive a stake through anything. I don't, I don't think anybody who's proposed or has supported the, the the Coast Guard Festival anymore than, than I have, but I, but if there are issues, they need to be talked about, and it can, they can be talked about at the DDA level, they can be talked about, or they can be talked about here, and I don't think that's a problem. It just, 'cause you're gathering information, and if the, you know, the, it's, you know, just talking to people and saying, well, these are the kind of issues that we're facing, you know, how can they be addressed? That, that's not trying to hurt anybody, that's just trying to make it, you know, make a bad situation better for somebody if they have, if they have issues. And the only way to do that is to, is to bring it up and talk about it, so, um, I, I, to know that, you know, no, there isn't a better place to put it, you just gotta, you know, we, we can make it better for the time that it's there. And I think that that's an allowable goal, and everybody is on the same page. Nobody's, nobody on Coast Guard Festival's got an issue with it. The DDA doesn't have an issue with it. It's just that it comes up periodically. Is there a different, you know, it's ten years, as things change, can, is it a possibility? You look at the possibilities, they go, nope, we just gotta figure out how to make it better. There is some concern about the crowd that we're gathering. Sometimes that crowd isn't in the carnival. Sometimes they're just circulating in intersections. If they were all in the carnival riding rides, it wouldn't be so bad.
If they're all riding rides, it'd be really problematic.
It would be really, but, but it's, but it's some of the other, some of the other places where folks gather, outside of the carnival is, is what's a concern to folks, and I know public safety is working hard with the, with the Coast Guard Festival as to, as to how to address some of those issues, and um, we're, it's, it's a small place to pack, you know, to pack two hundred thousand dollar, two hundred thousand people in a, in a few, couple of blocks.
Grantham is small, for that amount of people.
That's a big, that's a big challenge, and, and, uh, and, and that's, it takes a lot of, you know, figuring out how to keep everybody safe, and that's, that's always my concern, is you pack that many people into a small location. You want everybody to go home safely, you want all the plate glass windows to still be in one piece when everybody leaves, and the streets are cleaned afterwards by our, by our, uh, public works guys, so, um, it's all good, but you can always make it better, and you don't know until you start talking about it, so.
Yep, they need to discuss it.
Absolutely.
But we done, I, I think they had one thing before we, before we adjourn. This month's MML magazine, I know everyone of us gets one. If you look into it, and we're talking about parking structures, I forgot to bring this up during council comments, says, do we really need more parking? It goes on, read that whole article, 'cause it tells you that with the trends and everything that's going on, parking structures are a thing of the past, if you read it closely.
I don't know if I agree with that, but I'll read it.
I just want you to tell you to read the article in it, 'cause it's pretty interesting what I read on it, and, uh, 'cause of autonomous cars and, and the trends of car buying and everything else that's going on in the market. That's transit.
I've heard people say ten years, and I don't know if that's, I think that's a little optimistic. Same thing with electric cars, and then GM shuts down their electric cars. It's, I'm not sure it's.
I just wanna add that.
Okay.
Just read that article.
All righty, um, call the audience. Kind of.
They're awful quiet back there.
Yeah.
Real quiet audience.
All right. Well, we're looking forward to August, that's for sure.
I don't know if anybody noticed a new face over here. Padley Gallagher is in the clerk's office. And is learning, because at your next meeting, I believe she will be in the hot seat.
All right, Padley.
Clerking.
Oh, boy.
It'd be nice for her.
We'll have to check those minutes over real close.
All right, good deal. So, you're all prepped and ready to go? All right, good deal. In that case, we are adjourned.